All right, I call the order. I call the order of this. All right. Call the order of this meeting scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting for the 34th Dearborn City Council, November 18th. 20:25 at 7:00 PM. Just a kind reminder of everyone in the room. Hang on one second.
We can't hear you.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, hold on, hold on. Okay. Folks, we have a microphone system that I'm operating. We do not tolerate outbursts in this council chambers. Everybody is here to be heard. We want to hear you, okay? So, the microphones, this is the microphone system we have. So if we have outbursts, you're gonna, if there's, people are gonna have outbursts, you will be removed. You'll be warned once and then you'll be removed, okay? That's the way it works. We want you to be heard. That means you get an opportunity to come to the microphone and speak your piece based on the public comment timing, okay? So, let me turn these on. Council chair is on. Al-Sawafi, Abraham on, okay. Here it goes. My microphone is on. Let me see. Okay. That same? Yeah, I think they're the same. All right. All right, so again, I apologize for the delay. The council meeting of the 34th Dearborn City Council, I just want to remind everyone to please silence your cell phones as to not disturb the meeting. And Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Al-Sawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Al-Sawafi. Councilman?
Thank you, Council President. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce Pastor Dath Roomson of Guardian Lutheran Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who is able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Just to lighten the mood, I'm honored that so many showed up for my opening prayer tonight. Thank you so much. Psalm 133 says, "David, behold how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell in unity. It's like the precious oil on the head, running down on the beard, on the beard of Aaron, running down on the collar of his robes. It's like the dew of Hermon which falls on the mountains of Zion, for there the Lord has commanded the blessing life forevermore." And Dearborn, we're a great place. We have differences, diversity, and maybe disagreements, but how blessed we can have dialogue and discussion in a wonderful, respectful way. We pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you. We are blessed in so many ways. You are the giver of all things, and during this Thanksgiving time going into the holidays and Christmas season, we thank you. And we just pray that you would give your wisdom, your guidance on all of us. We thank you for all of our workers that work here in Dearborn, and we just pray your continued blessings on all of us and on this meeting tonight. May all things be done in a good order and in a good way and pleasing to you. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, at this time, Mr. Clerk, we would like to go forward on the next item of business.
Item number four resolution by Council President Pro Tem Herrick, supported unanimously, recognizing teacher Sandy Smith for the positive impact she has made on countless students during her 52-year career in Dearborn Public Schools, and requesting immediate effect.
Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, we proudly recognize and extend our gratitude to Sandy Smith for her extraordinary 52 years of dedicated service as an educator in Dearborn Public Schools. A proud graduate of Edsel Ford High School, Western Michigan University, and the University of Michigan, she has touched countless lives through her unwavering commitment to excellence in education and her genuine care for students. Her impact extends far beyond the classroom. Through her leadership as Director of the Hand Bell Choir at Dearborn First United Methodist Church, she continues to inspire others with her passion for music, community, and service. On behalf of the Dearborn City Council, we congratulate Sandy Smith and thank her for her lifelong impact. Thank you, Sandy, for the impact that you've made on your family, on our schools, and on generations of Dearborn residents. I'd like to add a personal note that way back when Sandy was fresh out of college, her first assignment full-time was with Dearborn Public Schools at Lindbergh Elementary School, where I was a sixth-grade student. And I know that my classmates and I, we are some of the closest of the graduates of Dearborn High School from when we graduated, partly because of the camaraderie and friendship that she fostered in her classroom as she taught us. She found strengths in each of us that maybe we didn't know were there previously. And the thing that I remember most was that she nominated me to attend a young writer's workshop at University of Michigan Dearborn. And I had to present a little booklet that I had written and illustrated with all these students from across Wayne County. And I met other students who were writers, and I never thought I had that in me, and she saw it and nurtured that. And I think it was one of the major stepping stones that led through my career in public relations and marketing and writing and writing press releases even for Mayor O'Reilly, may he rest in peace, to where we are today, where I am today. So Sandy, I can't thank you enough for what you've done for me and all the students in our classroom and all those that followed in those years with the Dearborn Public Schools. So I'm honored to recognize you and glad to have the support of the city council in this recognition of you this evening.
Thank you very much. There is three of these, two or three citations, so once we read them all into the record, we're gonna ask that the families and the members that are being awarded by the council to come forward to get a photo and be recognized and get their plaque. For me, on a personal level, Mrs. Sandy Smith is a personal friend of mine and Mr. Chandler, of course, her husband. But for me, I think all five of my children were, had the honor and privilege to be taught by Mrs. Smith. So I want to thank Councilwoman Herrick for bringing this forward. Mrs. Smith has touched countless, countless lives. Every time it seems that she retires, they pull her back in to take some more classes and bring her back to do some more. So those of you that are looking at the life of educating, the amount of people that you touch throughout your life is incredible. It makes a tremendous difference to people. They do not forget it. So Mrs. Smith, well deserved, and again, congratulations, and we'll see you up here in a minute. Thank you. A unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item?
Item number five resolution by Councilmember Abraham, supported unanimously, recognizing Mustafa Hawwili for his dedicated service and support in the Dearborn community and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. We're proud to recognize attorney Mustafa Hawwili, I believe is the pronouncing, tonight for his exceptional legal work in the city of Dearborn. This was brought forward by Councilman Mustafa Hamud.
Yep.
It was originally, yes, I believe Councilman Abraham offered it. Councilman Abraham, do you?
I'm gonna, at the request of Councilman Hamud, withdraw my offer.
All right, Mr. Clerk, we'll draw the offer, Councilman Abraham, and put the Councilman Hamud as the offer. And sponsor Mr. -- Councilman Hamud, would you like to speak on this?
Yeah, so today, we proudly recognize attorney Mustafa Hawwili for his exceptional legal work in Dearborn, a founding member of H&amp;H Law Group and dedicated litigator. He successfully handled over 300 cases across Michigan's courts, touching on countless lives through both civil and criminal matters. Beyond courtroom achievements, he has made a lasting community impact through his pro bono advocacy, including defending wrongfully charged protesters and assisting vulnerable residents and preventing housing loss. He's recognized as a rising star in the community and a Michigan Lawyers Weekly Up and Coming Lawyer. So I think just the general point is, you know, one thing I really appreciate about Mustafa, not just because he has the same name as me, but, you know, a lot of people get into law and they want to do all kinds of things with their lives, but what I really appreciated is this gentleman is very committed to service and especially to his pro bono work that is really a big part of his life. So I just wanted to take an opportunity, you know, it's, I think it's important we talk about young lawyers and show that, you know, even when you get involved in the legal system and just because you're not necessarily a prosecutor, there are ways where you can help people out and help your community and taking on pro bono work and helping elderly residents to prevent them from going homeless is something that I think is a very admirable type of work to do. So that's why I just wanted to offer this citation.
Thank you, Councilman. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item number six resolution by Councilmember Enos, supported unanimously, recognizing Dr. Mohammed Ibrahim for his assistance in saving the life of a resident at a local business and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. On October 27th of this year, Dr. Mohammed Ibrahim demonstrated extraordinary courage and decisive action during a medical emergency that took place in the Dearborn Meat Market. Upon witnessing a patron that was choking, Dr. Ibrahim immediately intervened administering the Heimlich maneuver for several minutes until it successfully dislodged the obstruction. His swift response ultimately saved the life of this resident. Chief Shaheen had brought this forward. Chief, would you like to step forward to give us some more background?
Good afternoon, Mr. Shaheen, Chief of Police. Thank you, Council President. Thank you for taking the time to recognize Dr. Ibrahim. It's not every day that you have the opportunity to save someone's life. And to step in in that moment and do such an honorable act, the officers called me immediately. They were like, "Chief, this was extremely chaotic." It was literally, this woman was within, you know, seconds of death because it had taken some time to dislodge the item in her throat. But again, all the respect and honor to you for doing such a thing. This really highlights what makes Dearborn so special, saving another community member. So thank you, Dr. Ibrahim.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, what we're gonna do, Chief, we're gonna, we're gonna complete this one, bring down each family in just a minute. So Doc, you can be, just hang on right there, and we'll get you in. But we really appreciate that. You're always on call, I guess, right? Ready to serve. It's a difference when you have the training, but when you can actually act is a difference. So tremendous, tremendous event there and thankfully saving a life of a resident as well. And a unanimous roll shall be attached. At this time, we are going to come down to the, the council's gonna come down here to the front. We're gonna have Mrs. Smith in the order they were called. Is Mustafa Hawwili here?
He should be, yeah.
Okay. We'll make sure if he's there, and then we'll take, make sure that we give them their presentation before we go further, further, okay? So Mrs. Smith, Mr. Chandler, would you like to come forward?
Yeah, I told several of them. Right over there, just in here. Okay? All five of my gills. Morning. And here's less. Yeah. Are you good? All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. All right. All five of my gills. Come on. Come on. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right. Council total? Thanks, sir. Yeah, that's nice. I see this, I mean, just say it all forever. Congratulations. You signed it over there. Here we are again. Mustafa? Yeah. Can we get it? It's on the hall. Mustafa? Did you hear that? Mustafa? Yeah. Over here. Yeah. All right.
Thank you, everyone, for that brief delay. This is part of the, under the 34th Council, this is something that the council has been doing for our term, recognizing events and special people in the city of Dearborn, is there's a lot that does happen, and we wanted to make sure they're recognized. At this time, we're gonna begin our 30-minute public comment section.
Number seven.
Oh, I'm sorry, is there? I'm sorry, Councilman.
Item seven.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you both. Mr. Clerk, before we go to the public comment, there is item seven.
Yes. Item number seven resolution by Council President Serini, supported unanimously, offering condolences to the family of James R. Stokes and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. With solemn hearts, we are deeply saddened by the passing of James R. Stokes on October 7th, 2025, a distinguished community leader and advocate who endured a long and courageous battle with cancer. He was 74 years old and passed peacefully, surrounded by many loving family members and friends. Jim was born on June 5th, 1951, in the city of Detroit and was the son of John and Kathleen. He was predeceased by his spouse Frederick Hoffman, who also lost his life to the Battle of Cancer on October 16th of 2019. Together, they celebrated a committed partnership that lasted over 36 years. Jim's profound commitment to education and community service led him to pursue various degrees, including bachelor's degrees in history, philosophy, master's degrees in theology and counseling, as well as his law degree, Juris Doctor degree, as he was a legal professional, counselor, and attorney, showcasing his dedication to both his legal and social services fields. Jim achieved emeritus status, having been over 25 years on the Board of Access with a Center of Partnership and Affiliations and a community center, along with various other organizations. In 2008, Jim was a recipient of the Outstanding Arab American in State Government Award from the Yemeni American Benefluent Association, or YAVA. In 2012, he was honored by the Arab American Chamber of Conference as Attorney of the Year. He was also served as an appointee to Henry Ford Community College Leaders Advisory Council. Jim was a proud to serve as a Director of Appointments for the State of Michigan during the administration of Governor Jennifer Granholm. Together, Jim and Fred created endowment scholarships in public policy at Henry Ford College and the University of Michigan Dearborn and Michigan State University School of Law. We remember Jim with deep affection and gratitude for his charity and charitable humanity, the life he lived, and the generous, as generous a person he was. He lives behind a legacy of joy, commitment, and many pursuits. He will be deeply missed and finally, and fondly remembered. May his soul rest in eternal peace, and to all, we offer our most sincere condolences to the Stokes family. Councilwoman Herrick, would you like to add something?
I'd just like to say that Jim will be missed by so many, including myself. I met him, I'm thinking about 2010, and he and Fred were so encouraging as I was kind of changing career paths a little bit and getting more involved in Dearborn in different ways. And it was, thanks to their encouragement that, again, that I'm here today. So we will miss you, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any unanimous roll shall be attached. Okay, Mr. Clerk, the next item?
Item number eight is a public comment, and we're at 7:22 right now.
All right, so for everyone, the council, under this administration, the 34th Council, the rules were enacted to allow up to 30 minutes of public comment prior to our business items to better serve our residents. So keep in mind, the speaker is allowed three minutes. They have a 30-second warning that will be given by the clerk, and they are to address the council, not to address the crowd. And keep in mind that no outbursts are allowed. We want to be heard, and we want the person to be heard, okay? Also, keep in a reminder, we have comment cards. You do not have to fill one of these out if you want to be recognized. You could just put your hand up, and we will put you in line. Keep in mind, the cards currently are well over 10, which 10 is usually the limit in the first council portion. At the end of the 10, we will call them to then conduct our council meeting, and at the end of the council meeting, the cards will then be pulled in the same order to complete, and those that are here that would like to speak can. Just keep in mind, both public comment sessions are only allowed one speaker, one person to speak at that time. So, Mr. Clerk, I have, yeah, 7:22, 7:23. And the first speaker we have is Dennis Dugan.
Dennis? Dugan. Dugan. Dennis? He's probably in the outer area.
Yeah, I got it. I got it. We'll find it, don't worry. Yeah, no problem. Yes, sir.
What's up, Dennis?
It's okay.
Usually in the front, not today.
Dennis Dugan, I am in my dream apartment at Morley Manor in my beloved city of Dearborn. And just to say, I went to college with Jim Stokes.
Oh, did you? That's great.
Okay, so I just want to say for the council, I'm gonna watch you closely as you go into a new season. When I retired, I decided to do two things, write two letters a week, one of gratitude a week, one of gratitude and one of challenge to somebody who wasn't doing what they were supposed to do. So, I've written letters to you in both fashions over the years, but I'm going to say that I'm going to do it again. Here's what I noticed this last couple of weeks, and I'd like you to notice it. The B.C. gas station at the corner of Mason-
Yes.
And Michigan Avenue, I went in, I bought a Lotto ticket. And I know for my brothers and sisters in the Muslim tradition, that's not a good thing. That's haram. But for Catholics, it's okay. It's not against us.
No.
So, I bought the Lotto ticket. Somehow, it left them there. They could have just disappeared. But there were two young men at the counter that, when I called back, they gave me the exact understanding of what had happened. They had the tickets for me, and they were honest. I'll tell you, they were so honest. And what that made me notice is, all throughout Dearborn, how many teenagers do we have working at counters? How many young people are working at counters that are doing excellent jobs of service and learning how to be economically involved and how to treat other people? So, please, notice that more into the future, all right? That's my thing. I will go back. I wrote a letter to the three high schools saying, "You're doing a good job," because I went on to the websites of all three high schools, and if you have not read the ethics and the morals and the codes of conduct that are on those three high school, that they're trying to input into young people, you're missing something. Something else I noticed. Many of you, this, okay, I noticed it because of the election. Many of you won your seats back, and comfortably won your seat back. As an old guy watching politicians, one thing I worry about people who get in and use that word mandate. I hope I don't hear mandate from anybody, because you are servants. You have been called to be people of servants.
You have 30 seconds?
30 seconds. Oh, right. Okay, so that's the number. I'm going to eliminate one, but the other one, what I noticed is, there will be no woman on the council come January. I hope the rest of you do something about making sure that women's thoughts get put into and are remembered, because when men do all the thinking, it's different than when women put their thoughts and their hearts and their minds to it. Morley Manor, our whole board is women, and we're doing better than we used to.
Your time has expired. Thank you, Mr. Dugan. Appreciate that. All right, so next we have Hudson Lang.
I'm Edward Lang, and there's another man named Anthony Hudson here.
No, this-
So, I don't know which one-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. No, that's, I apologize. It's, I'm sorry, that was the adri- or topic, so the, I'm sorry. It is Leanna Mohalen? We'll give a minute, because there's overflow room. Chief, thanks. Leanna, maybe? L.I.A.N. Leanna Mohalen. All right, great. Thank you for coming forward. And just a kind reminder, you state your name and address for the record, and you have a three-minute time limit.
Okay. My name is Leanna Mohalen. I live at 2051 Hyde Park Road in Detroit. I came here today to stand in solidarity with Dearborn and its diverse peoples of all religion and races. Today, I'm part of the group BAM, By Any Means Necessary. Our full name is the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary. And we came today to say that fascists are not welcome in Dearborn. The likes of Hudson and Lang are not welcome in Dearborn. I think that that was made extremely clear by the action today. People saw what was happening, and they came out and provided the welcome that such people deserve. And I think this really sets a model to other cities who are facing these same kinds of attacks. They are just doing these attacks on behalf of the Trumps of the world. This is, they are doing this on their behalf. This is a real policy. And I just think today, we really showed that, we really stood to say that, like, we are one people and one nation, and we are not about, we are not, we are standing against what they, we are standing against fascism in Dearborn and anywhere that we may see it. And I just think that we really, by the end of the march that I was on, they went from being maybe, I don't know, around 50 people to, like, three guys with a banner, because they had been scared away. And I think that is exactly the kind of action that is needed. And I think Dearborn really set the model for how to deal with these situations. And I just hope that, I think things like this will continue to happen, but I think that we know what to do, and we need to keep doing it. And what was done today was, was exactly what was needed. So, I would just encourage people to continue to build the movement, to get Donald Trump out and defeat his fascist movement, and to build a movement that can put the oppressed in power. Thank you.
Thanks. Sir, please, we don't tolerate any outbursts. Please, remember, okay? No outbursts. Next we have Adriana. Lupkiewicz? I can't pronounce it. Okay, we'll come back to her if you, if they think. No, you got her? Oh, great. All right, thank for her. Thank you.
I'm pretty sure you called me. My name is Adrian Lupkiewicz.
Yeah.
Okay.
I couldn't pronounce the last name. Go ahead.
Yeah, most people can.
Just again, your name and your address for the record, and just kind of remind you you have a three-minute time limit.
Okay, thank you. My name is Adrian Lupkiewicz. I live at 19541 Cranbrook, which is in Detroit. I'm, sorry, I'm standing here today in solidarity with several members of our community that are here and who attended our march to condemn Anthony Hudson, Jake Lang, and their fascist supporters, and also to condemn this council's poor, abysmal attempts to protect them. The police outside, they did nothing to really disperse the crowd of fascists. All they did was protect them, and that is wrong. You know, with its own unique history of struggle and progress, it is clear that the Dearborn community can unite and stand together against these attacks on everything the people of Dearborn have achieved. Dearborn, in fact, is well-suited to provide important leadership to the movements to defeat the hate-mongering demagogues and lead America on the true way forward. The people of Dearborn and their friends and neighbors in the greater Detroit area should and can not only unite now to defeat this demagogic fascist movement led by Trump, but also to put forth a common vision for an integrated America that truly is for all its people. L.A., Berkeley, and other cities fighting and shutting down ICE raids and deportations and condemning fascism with mass actions have shown the way to defeating Trump and his demagogic followers. They have given us a model on what to do to defeat fascist thugs in and out of uniform by mobilizing our neighbors and our communities in self-defense. This is the fight of our lives, and we can win. There's a precedent in Dearborn's recent history for the situation we are in now. In 2011, anti-Islamic provocateur Terry Jones came to Dearborn to spew his hateful nonsense. The people of Dearborn organized large counter demonstrations to stop the provocateur and his demagogic program and set him packing. We must let Anthony Hudson and Jake Lang know that we will not allow neo-fascists to promote racism and Islamophobia in our communities. We will organize against all our efforts by Donald Trump or any would-be MAGA state dictator to occupy or militarize Dearborn, Detroit, or any other community. Fascism does not go away if you ignore it. The fascists just get bolder and organizing violence and intimidation of minority communities. For now, they are relatively small and weak, but if we use the collective strength and determination we showed not only today, but also at the No Kings Day rallies-
You have 30 seconds.
-in our pro-Palestine demonstrations, we can defeat them. So, I'm just also asking the council to stand in solidarity with the people here today that are condemning fascism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Christopher English. Christopher English, we'll check the overflow room. No?
Counselor.
Okay.
Good question.
Nope. Sir, 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 we're going in the order that I call. Do not, that's your last warning. The next outburst, you're going to be removed. Okay? Excuse me, folks. There's no outbursts in the council chambers. We're running a meeting and conducting city business. It's very clear. Sir, sir. Okay, that's your, that's your last warning. Next person outbursts is being, is being removed. Donna Stern. Can we check the overflow? Donna Stern. Good? Okay, great. Thank you.
My name is Donna Stern, S.T.E.R.N., and I live at 2051 Hyde Park Road, Detroit, Michigan. And I'm here also from BAM, the Coalition to Defend Affirmative Action, Integration, and Immigrant Rights, and Fight for Equality by Any Means Necessary. And I think it is very important that we take on people who would come into our communities and attack our religion, or our ethnicity, or our immigrant status, and that it's so important that as communities, we stand up against that kind of hate. And we, they will not go away by ignoring them. I think that we've seen, there are people I know in the overflow room who do not believe that we're seeing fascism. But I think there is no question that we're looking at the growth of fascism in America, and that this is very similar to the way that Hitler gained power. He gained it by democratic electoral means, but then he took power into his hands and crushed democracy. And that's what we're seeing with Trump, and that's what we're seeing with Trump followers, like the two who came with their hate to Dearborn today. I think it's, you know, as my predecessor speaker was saying, when Terry Jones came to burn a Quran, hundreds of people came out to shut him down, and we were successful in doing that then. I was there then, and we need to do the same now. And when we face, as we're going to, one of the things that Arthur Hudson called for was for troops to be brought in against immigrants. And I think it's very important that for all of our immigrant communities, we're out there stopping ICE from taking and kidnapping our neighbors and friends. It's incredibly important that we mobilize our neighborhoods, our neighbors to protect each other. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Adam A. Adam? Just a kind reminder, sir, you're going to state your name and address for the record, and the clerk will let you know when you have 30 seconds left. It's a three-minute time limit.
Assalamualaikum. Peace be upon you all. My name is Adam. I'm a resident of Dearborn Heights on Ann Arbor Trail. I appreciate the honorable leadership of the council. One verse in the Bible that resonates with me is 1 John 4:7. "Dear friends, let us love one another, for love comes before, comes from God. Everyone who loves has been born of and knows God." One verse in the Quran that resonates with me is the very first one. "Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, in the name of God, the most beneficent, the most merciful." I think today's emotions are running high, and unfortunately, because of that, we often lose sight of our shared humanity. I would just like to encourage everybody to go down to the ground level and recognize our shared unity, our bond. I would encourage also the council, I think Dearborn is such an incredible place. I've been here my entire life, and I see the incredible, incredible unity that we have in our community. And I would encourage that, you know, in light of, fortunately, some misunderstandings and perhaps some yellow journalism, maybe the council of Dearborn could build a council of, I don't know, maybe some kind of outreach, or something to show the icon of Dearborn. I think if people really come here and live and see and come here on a normal day, it would shock them. And unfortunately, I don't think the world knows what Dearborn has. The fog of current situations is stopping us. So, I would just encourage the, you know, Dearborn council, the respected council, to perhaps build maybe some sort of social media team. We've got a lot of youth coming out here-
30 seconds.
-and we have a lot of skills. Maybe we could do something to show the world that Dearborn is America manifested to the highest degree, really. If you look at the founding fathers, I study, you know, the political theory of this country, and I'm shocked, really, in a good way. I just appreciate your guys' leadership, and I would just encourage, maybe we could do something to show the world Dearborn.
Sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have Yusef Nassar. And then if, Connie, Christopher English, if that person's no longer here, just let me know. But we do have, Yusef Nassar is next. No? Yusef? Okay. Next, we have Isaac Thomas.
All righty. Thank you, guys, very much for having me here tonight. My name's Isaac Thomas. I'm just an American citizen, and I'm here to speak. You know, there's a lot of tension that I see going on. I've heard a lot of talk tonight about fascism and President Trump, things like that. And I find it interesting, because it's coming from a party that forced-vaccinated people and tried to lock them in their homes for three years straight and shut down schools. And I guess here's a point I want to make. You know, there's, it's okay to have different views, different religions, and different political views. But there's a fine line between having a belief and then trying to force your belief on other people. Every person in this room has a right to follow the Muslim religion, or to be a Christian, or to be anything like that. And I think that everyone in our group of protesters here completely agrees that there should be no sort of hatred towards people. As Christians, we are called to love all people, even though we might not agree with Islam, or we might not agree with Joe Biden, or whatever it may be, that we should still treat people with respect and with love. And tonight, when we came here to protest, nobody was violent. We don't agree with Islam. We spoke openly about that. We don't agree with Sharia law. We don't agree with six-year-olds being allowed to marry. But, at the end of the day, we were not violent, but we were met with violence. We had videos, and thousands of people have seen it's viral on X, of our protesters standing here being assaulted. Your own officers were feeling overwhelmed, and eventually, you know, at first, for about two hours, they weren't able to do anything, because the crowd was so big, and there wasn't enough officers to help. Finally, once they got some backup, they put some barricades up and did what they should have did at the beginning, which was separate the two crowds. Clearly, these tensions are very high. The crowd should have been separated, and one people should have been able to protest peacefully. The other side should have been able to have their views. That's not what happened tonight. Instead, multiple people were assaulted. It was caught on video, and we would like to make police reports for the assaults that happened to us. So far, the officers have refused to do that. One asked me, and I made sure I was recording, they watched somebody throw food on me. I asked the officer to make a report. Asked for my ID. I said, "Here it is." And he said, "Okay, you can come in and go to the police department tomorrow to make a report." He wouldn't, he wouldn't accept that. So, I would ask that this council, despite all of the many disagreements between our religion and whatnot, that everyone treat people with respect, and that we-
You have 30 seconds.
-acknowledge the right for people to have different views, including the protesters, right? Islam has a right to support Islam, and so do people that may not agree with that. That's not what happened tonight, and I think if this city doesn't handle this, and if the officers are not, you know, let, knowing that we have a right to make a police report, there will be legal action taken against this council, and I want that, this to be considered a formal notice. The last thing I want to say is, Jesus is Lord. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Jojo Bazzy. Thank you, ma'am. Just a kind reminder, you're just name and address for the record, and then you have a three-minute limitation. The clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds left, okay?
Okay.
Yeah.
Hello, my name is Jojo Bazzy. I live in West Dearborn, around Lovegood Park. So, today I would like to come here to talk about the recent hate that's been going on online and in real life with these protests in Dearborn, Michigan. I feel unsafe in my own city now. From the hate that's been going online, I have the app X. The things that I have been seeing, I've been seeing death threats, I've been seeing gun threats, I've been seeing a lot. So, for them to come here and call it a peaceful protest, and then continue to disrespect us as people, not even only as Muslims, just as people, I don't know what he thought he was doing by holding up a piece of bacon like it was going to scare us away. It's just completely disrespectful. I think that you're not trying to be peaceful. You are trying to get us to be mad and to be angry. And I think that it's really, how do I word this? I don't think you're here to do anything but cause chaos. You sit here and you try to burn a Quran. That didn't work out, and it's never going to work out. I'll let you know that from now. I, as a Muslim, would never sit here and try to burn a Bible or disrespect anyone of any kind of religion, and I feel in danger. With these people behind me, I feel in danger, in my own city. I'm 18. I should not be feeling scared. They, in our countries, the reason why most of our parents immigrated here was because they were dying. And now, when we come here, we can't even be safe. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, we have two more speakers before the time will expire, and then we'll take the rest at the end of the council meeting. We have Ali Hassan.
Good evening, council members and whoever else came. Bismillahirrahmanirrahim, in the name of Allah, the most gracious, the most merciful. I just want to say a few things before I start. First of all, the word Sharia just means law. Saying Sharia law is saying law, law. So, it seems like there's quite a large group of individuals here who are intellectually inept, and if that word is too big for them, intellectually inept, I'll say it again, they can Google it later. But, other than that, it is incredible that individuals who were charged with beating cops with bats are allowed to come to this city and say that they are going to take a holy book and burn it. This is not free speech, and this is not hate speech. This is speech that will initiate violence. That is correct. This will initiate violence. You are coming to come and burn a book that Muslims hold very dear to their heart. And another thing, Dearborn is historic. It has done many great things. In 2023, it received a Silver Award for Environmental Friendliness, the Silver Award in Environmental Friendliness by the state of Michigan. It has one of the largest indoor historic museums. And to say that individuals can come and harass your citizens, and who have beaten your cops, they want to talk about the protesters didn't respect your cops. No, in fact, that is false, and is a tukokoi. It's a logical fallacy. It is a logical fallacy, because they themselves do not respect the police officers here. One individual was policed, and he was put into jail for four years because of that. It is pathetic. It is pathetic, and it should not be allowed by no means necessary. And for us as Muslims, we believe in justice, and we also believe in saying justice no matter who it's against.
You have 30 seconds.
Whether it may be against yourselves or anyone, each one of us should look whether or not we are being true individuals of service. And Muslims are indeed peaceful, indeed peaceful. Islam itself means to submit. The derivative is Salaam, which means peace. Thank you so much.
Thank you.[1796.11] All right, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Farhat. Yep.
Thank you, council, for a few moments here today. My name is Alabas Farhat. I'm the state representative for the city of Dearborn, and I thank you, folks, all for this time, and congratulations on those of you that have run reelection just recently. You know, a lot of people want to tell us what Dearborn is and what it means to live in the city of Dearborn. But I think it's prudent that we tell them what Dearborn is. Because Dearborn has been a proud and continues to be a proud American city, a city that is rooted in the core values that America was founded on. Those are freedom, diversity, and opportunity. Families came here from every corner of the world, Arab-Americans included. But before that was the Italians, before that, the Irish. And for years, they continued to call Dearborn home. They came here to build up America, to build up that story that we all are a part of. This is a city where generations have worked hard, raised families, served in our military. It is a city that has helped build up the industry of our nation. And during the Great World War, Dearborn was part of the arsenal of democracy. We stood up when the nation called. This city helped meet that moment, and its people helped meet that moment. But now, and for too long, Dearborn has been turned into a political soundbite for those that are looking to pick up cheap points on the backs of the hard-working families in this city. They've been made to feel unsafe in their own neighborhoods and in their own homes. They've been made to be worried to walk down the streets. And I want to compliment our police department, actually, who's done a remarkable job keeping our houses of worship safe, our schools safe, and making sure that people can still respect and appreciate a response time despite all the shenanigans and cheap political points people want to bring to our city. The city of Dearborn is stronger than the division that surrounds us. We've seen this time and again. This council has seen it time and again. The residents have seen it time and again. But I will just say, we're sick of it. We're tired of these games. We're tired of the political football. If you truly want to get to know the city of Dearborn, gladly stop by. Any of the establishments, any of the hospitality, come tour the Arab-American Museum, which is a museum, by the way. It's not a mosque, for those, I know there was some confusion earlier today. It's a museum where you can learn about history and the heritage and the story, not just Arab-Americans, but the story of America. And that is what our city is. Dearborn is an American city. It'll continue to be a proud American city. It'll continue to be a city that demonstrates what the very best of us can be. I appreciate that reminder. Mr. Clerk, so thank you for that. And again, I just implore this council, and I implore the residents of the city, to continue leading in that model we know Dearborn is and that Dearborn could continue to be. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, so at this time, we have exhausted our 30 minutes of public comment. All the cards that I do have, those that keep coming up, we will keep them there and bring them forward at the end of the meeting, okay? At this time, Mr. Clerk, can we proceed to, I believe, item, well, before we proceed to the consent agenda, are there any items that any member wish to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually? Okay, Mr. Clerk, you may move forward on number nine.
Item number nine, resolution in need of offer and support.
Offered by Councilwoman Herrick, supported by Councilwoman Paris. You've got to request the mic.
This is to approve all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the roll?
Councilmember Enos.
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud.
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham.
Yes.
Councilmember Paris.
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi.
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick.
Yes.
Council President Serini.
Yes.
Seven yeas, the resolution passes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Can we go to the next item of business?
Yes, the next item of business will be item number 28, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Enos approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of October 21, 2025.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? All right, any questions or comments? Hearing none, unanimous roll should be attached. Officers, chief, let them know on the back. All right, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 29, ordinance number 25, that's 1861, introduced by Council President Protem Herrick, synopsis and ordinance to amend the administration chapter, Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending sections 2-476 to 2-490.3 of Division 7 entitled Historic Preservation Commission, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Paris to table the ordinance.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The preservation of historic properties and landmarks is controlled by the Local Historic Districts Act, PA 169 of 1970. The existing ordinance was adopted in 1998. Study sections to amend this ordinance were conducted in various months from in 2020, as well as 2021, 2024, and most recently, October 28 of 2025. The proposed ordinance was last presented to the council for consideration in 2021, but did not have support at that time. The first step in the process is to appoint a historic committee, historic district committee, which will be done by the Legislative Council here after the passing of this ordinance. The next step is to create, after that, would be to create a historic district commission, which oversees and regulates historic districts in the city and is responsible for plans, reviewing plans, reviewing federal guidelines, and focusing on scale and delegating minor work. This is the first of two readings. I know we do have a couple people here from the historic district to speak on this. Mrs. Harmon? Yeah, you can step forward first.
Hi, my name is Nancy Harmon. I live at 22278 Morley Avenue. I am president of the Morley Area Residents Association. I'm also part of the Historic Dearborn Preservation Group. I want to thank you for bringing this forward. It's taken more than five years to do it, and this is regular business. And I appreciate that Dearborn works this way, and I appreciate every one of you and every one of our police who is here today, who is giving us support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harmon.
Thank you.
Maria, yes?
My name is Maria Fogaras. You've seen me up here before, talking about this. I'm going to echo what Nancy said, that we appreciate your taking this up, and hopefully we can get it passed, and we can provide a path forward for preservation in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all your work, Maria, and I appreciate you coming tonight. And I know that I had promised you that this would come forward. I apologize it took so long, but I know we had conversations and we met individually with our legal department, and I think you understood how much work it took and why we had to delay. But, you know, it's still better here than not, and hopefully, we'll get it passed and get things going in the right direction.
Thank you.
But thank you for staying after us.
Is Brad here tonight?
Mr. Mendelson, our corporation counsel, Deputy Corporation Counsel, is not here today.
Oh, I just wanted to say, he did a tremendous amount of work and research.
Well, Mr. Romer is his boss.
Oh, oh, all right. Well, anyway, huge thank you for that also. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else here to speak on historic district? Okay, if not, then we will proceed with the council. Councilwoman Herrick.
Thank you, Council President. I'd just like to say how much I appreciate my colleagues on council, and especially the residents who have persisted with helping provide us with accurate information, connecting us with resources at SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Organization, again, Brad and our Corporation Counsel. This has been a long time in coming, passing this historic district ordinance, and it's been changed, the name is Historic Preservation Ordinance Commission, Ordinance. What it does is it defines the steps that are needed if an individual wants to try to protect a historic resource, a single building, or a neighborhood wants to seek preservation status as a whole neighborhood. It just sets the path that they must follow in order to get that designation. Public input is required along the way, a couple of public meetings, and then ultimately, it's up to the city council if that historic designation is given to that single building resource or a neighborhood. But what it does is it gives that neighborhood or the owner of that property advantages when it comes to applying for tax credits and other possible grants, that kind of thing, when it receives recognition at the higher level, at the state level. So the language in our ordinance had to comply with state regulations. That's part of why it took time. We had an ordinance on the books already, but it wasn't up to date, and we had to update the language, but we also had to do a lot of public education as to what the ordinance is. It doesn't automatically make any designations of a neighborhood or a home as historic. It just defines the pathway that must be taken if somebody wants to seek that designation as historic. And as Council President has said, you know, if something's 50 years old, it doesn't necessarily mean it deserves recognition. You know, this also gives us some guidance as to what might deserve recognition, you know, what makes a property unique, you know, what are its features that deserve preservation? What story does that tell? And so that was a lot of education for my fellow council members and myself as well along the way, and I'm so glad that we're finally here. So again, thank you to Corporation Counsel, especially Brad, the time that he took, and the public input that we had along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamud.
Yeah, so I appreciate you think legal, because I know this is something, even from the first day I took office, I think this was a topic, was the whether we would update the Historic Preservation Ordinance. And then I do want to say thank you to Nancy and Maria. I think Preservation Dearborn was one of the few groups that actually kind of put on a full educational session and brought in experts about the topic and ordinance that they were looking to pass. And I mean, I, as a policy nerd, really appreciated all the work that you guys put in over what has been many years' worth of advocacy, and I just want you guys to know, we did listen. And I think for me personally, on this ordinance, finding that balance between property rights and historic preservation and, you know, the rights that people have to their properties was something that was very important to me. And I think the nice thing about the way that we've written this ordinance is it does allow, I think, a really great balance that we also got approved by the state as far as the process is concerned. So hopefully, I mean, as we continue going through and figuring out which parts of the city or which buildings we'd like to designate as historic, I think it's going to be good because we're going to have professionals to kind of take a look at exactly, you know, what makes the building historic, and then that group is also going to be separated from the actual administration of the regulations that we're going to be putting on people if they do end up in a historic district or in a historic resource. And I think that's like a really great balance that we've been able to find. So, you know, credit to the council, too. I think it sounds like we also are generally on the same page on this one. And like I said, I can't stress to you guys how long it took for us to get here. So thank you, guys, so much.
Thank you. Any other comments from my colleagues? All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1861, an ordinance to amend the administration chapter, Chapter 2 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Dearborn by amending sections 2-476 to 2-490.3 of Division 7 entitled Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, unless we have an objection, unanimous roll shall be attached. Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 30, ordinance number 25-1862, introduced by Councilmember Paris, synopsis and ordinance to amend section 9.02 of ordinance number 06-1111 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at 2727 South Gully Road from an IB, which is medium industrial, to an IA, light industrial zoning classification. Resolution by councilmembers Enos and El-Sawafi to table the ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The purpose of this rezoning is to support local businesses and reduce the intensity of the industrial zoning area that abuts a city park. The property is approximately four and a half acres and contains 72,700-plus square feet on a one-story structure used for an indoor recreational facility, the Dearborn Racket and Health Club. The proposed rezoning is also consistent with the parcel's future land use designated as a mixed-use center, artisan and innovation. The rezoning will help bring the existing use of the property into conformity with the zoning districts in indoor recreation centers and permitted uses within the IA zoning districts, subject to a special land use standards. This is the first of two readings. This is very consistent to what we've been doing throughout the city in rezoning these buildings. Any questions or comments? Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, just props to ECD and the mayor's office for helping push this through, because I think anytime we can downzone areas or buildings near parks, I think that's a big win for the health of residents. So thank you, guys.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, can we have the first reading?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 25-1862, an ordinance to amend the section 9.02 of ordinance number 061111 of the city of Dearborn by rezoning the property located at 2727 South Gully Road from an IB to an IA zoning classification.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Unanimous roll should be attached unless I hear any objections. Hearing none, so is attached. Next item.
Item 31, resolution by councilmembers El-Sawafi and Paris, awarding a contract to Partners in Architecture in the amount of $164,720 for the design of new police locker rooms and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The main locker room is needed to be completely renovated, both in the men's and women's locker room, as well as the restrooms and shower facilities are needing a complete renovation. The police department personnel currently utilizes a women's locker room. The women's locker room contains 29 lockers with only eight available for future personnel. The space is limited, and the expansion is extremely challenging. The evaluation team, on behalf of the Dearborn Police Department, recommends an award of contract to Partners in Architecture, or PIA, for design of new locker rooms. The contract shall be for one-time purchase. The requested amount is $164,720. Any questions or comments on this? Okay, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 32, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and Paris, awarding a contract to Key Construction in the amount of $1,418,063 with a 5% contingency in the amount of $70,903 for construction services for the fire department, training, and emergency management facility.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The city of Dearborn has been awarded a $500,000 grant from the Wayne County Land Grant to fund a rehabilitation and renovation of a vacated animal shelter. The city of Dearborn has completed Phase 1 of the renovation plans of the old animal shelter to convert into a training and emergency operations management facility for our fire department. An RFP, or Request for Bid, was conducted for the construction services for Phase 2 of the renovation. One proposal was received from Key Construction and determined to be the lowest and most responsible bidder. Purchasing on behalf of the fire department recommends the award of the contract in construction services for the fire department training center to an emergency management facility to Key Construction. The requested amount is $1,418,063. $958,063 was from a grant, and $460,000 from the Wayne County Land Bank. Any questions or comments on this? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item.
Item 33, resolution by councilmembers Hamud and El-Sawafi, awarding a contract to McCarthy and Smith in an amount not to exceed $518,130 for construction management services for the renovation of Esper Library and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The planned renovation and service enhancement at the Esper Branch Library is a unique opportunity to positively impact the Dearborn community, particularly through a focus on STEM, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. Purchasing on behalf of the library recommends an award of a contract for construction management services and renovations of the Esper Library to McCarthy and Smith for Phase 2 of the renovations, which will be selected through the MCD Architects as the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. This contract will include construction management in the library, and we will return to the council for approval for subcontracting prices on this section. The requested amount is not to exceed $518,130 and is requesting immediate effect. Any questions or comments on this? Councilman Hamud?
So I had the opportunity to tour the Esper Library today with our library deputy director and our DPW director, and I think one thing that struck me is, you know, you hear about the library conditions, but getting to see it for yourself, you realize the building still has quite good bones regardless of the things that I've heard on social media and from other people who have worked in the city. And I think this is a great project, and I really appreciate that they're able to kind of start progressing on it finally, because I think that building has a lot of potential with the renewal of the Warren Avenue Corridor and kind of the new focus on community spaces, and also, I think, the new kind of initiative that I think we're all trying to focus on, which is, you know, Dearborn's for Families, right? I think- for Families, right? I think the renewal and enhancement of the Esper Branch Library very deeply falls into our priorities as going into this next administration. I'm really looking forward to continue seeing what kind of comes out of this contract, but also the project. And as it goes forward, the work that they're going to be doing and hopefully progressing in a quick pace to get it open as soon as we can for East Dearborn. So thank you guys so much, and honestly, good luck.
Thank you. Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. And I echo my fellow councilmen's sentiments regarding the repurposing, reuse renovations on our library branch. This is an example of how libraries are not, the traditional libraries, that if you have not been in a library in many years, they're not the same as they used to be. They're not just a place where you get hushed and there are books on the walls. There are all kinds of interactive opportunities at the branch itself, as well as, and there will be here, again, for STEM, science, technology, engineering, and art and math, family-friendly places where people can come and enjoy time together, learning and experiencing things together. So definitely the next step in the library world as a community hub. And I can't wait to see what we have there going for because, again, it'll be not just for the families who live nearby, but it'll be a place to visit no matter where you live in Dearborn, or if you're from outside of Dearborn, come to visit because it certainly is the new age of libraries. So thank you for the vision to our administration.
I don't know if Dr. Hawkins had left, one of our board members, but I know her son is here, but that's okay. We want his mom. Can we have, yeah, can we have, can we have our new interim library director step forward? Or Chief, maybe you want to introduce her. We'd like you to have you come in and just introduce yourself to the council. So if some people are not aware, we did have our library director had completed her term, and we do have a search. We have Dr. Hawkins, okay, one of our board members. So, Dr. Hawkins, would you like to step forward and just introduce her and just let us know? I really, I really appreciate the work that your board has been doing.
Well, thank you for the, I would have dressed more appropriately. I was sending the people in charge.
Yes.
I would like to introduce Patty. Don't ask me to pronounce her last name, but Patty was just recently appointed the interim director for our library.
Excellent.
And since then has put her running shoes on and is just moving forward. And just in the last two weeks, we have seen the work at the Esper Library really moving forward. And so we're excited at what she will do when she partners with Mr. Hawkins because on the Esper Library, they've created a team.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
We do appreciate it. Nothing moves forward without a team. Patty?
Thank you, Cheryl. I appreciate it. My name is Patty Podzakowski.
That's not that hard.
Not that bad. And I have proudly worked for the city for 25 years.
All right.
And I'm excited to take on this new role. I want the best for the library system and the city and the whole community. So thank you.
Well, we thank you for stepping forward and hopefully you put your name in the hat. I know it's an extensive process. A lot of the residents don't know our library budget nears $10 million. We do believe in our libraries in the City of Dearborn. And under the mayor's direction and reinvestment into our libraries, we're seeing that firsthand. So we do appreciate all the work that you do. And there's no great city without a great library.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right.
Did we mention Dr. Hawkins, the new head of the Library Commission?
Yeah, I did. We got that. All right, any other questions or comments?
Just one comment.
Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. If I, I'd be remiss in saying, though, to the Esper Library, for the renovation, that's going to take a period of time. Not too long ago, we finished with the Centennial Library, and then now we got the Bryant Library that's next up. So we've had a lot of upgrades to our facilities and bringing them up to date, and it's been pretty exciting. So appreciate the work of the Library Commission, our new library interim director and DPW.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 34, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Enos, authorizing a cooperative contract purchased via cooperative contracts with the Library Network, the Midwest Collaboratory for Library Services, and the Michigan Library Competitive Directors Association, from Midwest Tape LLC, Ingram Library Service, Baker &amp; Taylor, Cengage Learning, Inc., WT Cox, Overdrive, and Press Reader, in a total amount not to exceed $497,000 for the purchase of a variety of library materials for fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thanks for reading those, all those names in there for me.
Yes.
The library selection staff purchased a wide array of new materials annually, naming some the clerk names as well as borrowing from other public libraries. Some titles are replacement copies, but a majority of them are new titles recently purchased or released, also including our digital titles such as eBooks, streaming videos, and e-audio materials. The library continues to participate in cooperation purchase agreements through the Michigan Library Collective Directors Association, the Library Network, and the Midwest Collaboratory of Library Services, which allows the libraries to leverage collective buying power, reduce costs, and expand availability to the community. Purchasing on behalf of the library department recommends the purchases of a variety of library materials via cooperative contract. The total amount of the purchases is not to exceed $497,000 for this fiscal year 2026. Any questions or comments? Okay, objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 35, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Enos, awarding a contract to Civic Brand in the amount of $119,500 for branding and marketing services for the City of Dearborn beginning January 1, 2026, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The City of Dearborn seeks any creative and qualified branding and marketing firm to develop a comprehensive and unified branding identity for the city. The selective vendor will be responsible for creating a strong visual identity brand standards and a brand manual. The project will include a strategic public rollout plan for introducing the new brand across the city channels, events, and materials. Additionally, the city is seeking a short-term and long-term marketing strategy that identifies the most effective marketing channels. The city will be utilizing a portion of a previously approved service credit received through Karsoff Technology Group, a totaling for an amount of $350,000. The service credit was received as part of a marketing initiative as part of the city's agreement to pivot technology services provided by Google. Communications in conjunction with the purchasing and strategy recommends an award of this contract for the branding and marketing services in the amount of $119,500. The contract will begin work January 1, 2026, and should continue through the end of 2026 as the project progresses. Immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 36, resolution by councilmembers El-Swafi and Paris, authorizing the finance director to recognize the 2026 Michigan State Police Grants and Community Service Division Burn Justice Assistant Grant funding in the amount of $53,785 in the general fund, Police Administration Intergovernmental State Revenue Account 101-2410-330.04-90, and appropriate the same in the general fund Police Administration Account 101-2410-511.98-00, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Dearborn Police Department applied for and received a federal grant from the Michigan State Police Department from the Byron Justice Grant Assistant, or JAG. This award for 2026 calendar year was an amount of $53,785, and this is a reimbursement grant with no local match required by the city taxpayers. The grant will be utilized to facilitate and educate, education and innovation programs in the 19th District Court, community partners, and schools. A driving simulator from Oakland Community College will allow students to experience realistic driving scenarios and learn all about the dangers of reckless and destructive driving. We all know we need that. It is requested the finance director be authorized to appropriate the same in the police revenue, intergovernmental, federal revenue appropriate the same as well in the police administration. Any questions or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 37, resolution by councilmembers Herrick and El-Swafi, authorizing the Communications Department to consolidate two part-time CD-TV positions for the creation of one new full-time position as a multimedia design strategist with a budgetary increase in the amount of $12,000 after fiscal year 2026.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Since the beginning of 2025 calendar year, the Communications Department and the mayor's office have identified the increasing need for more support on a variety of multimedia services, including but not limited to graphic design, illustration, motion graphics, animation, videography, and the other artistic projects. Only the part-time technology specialist position is currently being filled by an employee. The Communications Department is requesting approval to combine the positions currently held by the part-time marketing assistants and part-time technical specialists to a total of 1.4 FTEs under the CTTV division to create one new full-time position with an intention of hiring multimedia design specialists using newly created full-time slot. Due to the timing and the department vacancies, the request is budget-neutral and remain for the fiscal year 2026. The estimated budgetary increase on this annual basis will be $12,000, including the salary and benefits of this position. So I do appreciate this. I was not here Thursday, Mayor, and I know the council, I pushed this through. This is definitely needed. And I know that through our staff, I know Jackie's not here, Kira's here, but through our staff, we've also reached out to a lot of times the Communication Department. So hopefully, we'll be able to reach out on this as well to cost share when we have to design something. So I do think this is definitely needed. So hopefully, that shouldn't be an issue. No, I don't think, yeah, Mayor, we don't have to codify anything like this, correct?
No.
Okay. It's just a good point of interest that we share services, especially for small things like this. The council doesn't do as much of this media aspect, but when we do, this will help us as well. So it's well needed and appreciated. Any questions or comments? Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 38, resolution by councilmembers Enos and El-Swafi, granting permission for the Dearborn Goodfellows Volunteers to sell their newspapers at intersections in the streets throughout Dearborn beginning Friday, December 5 through December 7, 2025, for their annual No Child Without a Christmas collection, and requesting immediate effect.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. It's that time. Annual request for the grant to the Dearborn Goodfellows Volunteers, permission to work on various intersections throughout the City of Dearborn to sell annual Goodfellow newspapers is a great tradition in Dearborn. All the proceeds from this event will go directly to provide Christmas gifts and basic necessities to underprivileged individuals and families in our community. This year's event will be held Friday, December 5, and immediate effect is being requested. Is anybody here from the Goodfellows? And George, what, where are you going to be at?
I'll be at the corner of Outer Drive in Cherry Hill.
Outer Drive in Cherry Hill. 7:00 AM?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM. So if you guys see somebody out there with the papers, stop and get one. It's a great cause, tremendous opportunity. If you have a chance to check the websites for Goodfellows, there's packaging, there's a lot to do. We have someone here from the Goodfellows who'd like to address it.
Absolutely. My name's Silvio Davis. I am the immediate past president of the Dearborn Goodfellows. Just want to say thank you to council, the administration, and really all of our departments. All come together to make sure that the thousand-plus kids that we serve every year, right here in this community. So it's a group effort. Thank you so much for the support. You guys make our job easy every year. So, yeah, watch out for us on the 5th and 6th and 7th. Be out there, have your pocket change ready, and, you know, come support us.
Yeah, it's a great event. I've done it for many years. Honestly, I didn't do it the last couple. It's getting, you know, getting up there in the cold. And I did have somebody, Mr. Davis, drop a large dollar amount in there, asked for change. I said, there's no way I'm putting my hand in here to get change.
No, yeah, tell them to call me.
It's too late. I'll give them your number.
Give them my number, yeah.
All right, great cause, folks, great cause. Dearborn Goodfellows have been around forever, and they do a tremendous amount of work. So we appreciate it. So, and I'm really glad we got this item in on time, too.
Yep, yeah. Thank you.
Councilman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Davis, for your service with the Goodfellows, as well as the other good things you do in our city. I just wanted to share, I've been collecting on our city clerk's team for, I don't know, 15 years with the Goodfellows. And I just wanted to share part of what I find most rewarding about it is when, yes, we get donations as people pass by with the cars and throw the money in, you know, in our stockings for the Goodfellows. But when we have an opportunity to have a conversation with somebody who's making a donation, and they talk about the impact that the Goodfellows made on them as a child, often it's, you know, adults, adults who are, you know, 60, 70 years old. This is how long the tradition has gone on in Dearborn. And, you know, they went through hard times. Their families went through hard times when they were children. And sometimes they had single moms, or, you know, Great Depression, all these things. But Goodfellows were there to help make sure that they had something in their stocking for Christmas. And they remember it from their childhood, you know, that their parents would say, this is thanks to the Goodfellows. And so even if these folks are now passing us and putting money, you know, in our stockings to help others, they're doing it because they remember what an impact it made on their lives at a very difficult time. And for some of the folks that give us a dollar or two, it's not easy for them, you know? They're coming in and they're watching their pennies as well today, but they know how important that is. And today, Dearborn has changed over the years. Our populations have changed, but the Goodfellows continue to serve. And so, you know, it's, the children who are in need today come from all different kinds of homes, and you don't necessarily recognize that when you see them, you know, going to school or, you know, out and about in the community at the parks. But we have a lot of children whose families are in need, and thank you to the Goodfellows for making sure that no child goes without a Christmas.
Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilman Enos?
Yep. My team will be at the corner of Carlisle, Pelham, and Outer Drive, so feel free to drop by and drop off some money, please. Thank you.
There you go.
You do get a paper with that, too.
Yeah.
Councilman Hamud?
So, I guess for Gary and for Silvio, do you guys already have the dates for packing night and the actual delivery date?
We do, yep. So we'll start off with, I guess, all the dates. So November 24, there's our annual luncheon kickoff where we do our large photo that goes on the front of the paper. So that'll be at Park Place, November 24 at 11:30 sharp, followed by the luncheon. And then our paper sales kicks off with the 5th, 6th, and 7th. We'll be out there selling on the corners, and then packaging and delivery. So we package the gifts at Village Ford Body Shop, same as the last previous years. That's going to be on December 19 at 6:00 PM. And then the following day, the next morning, we'll meet back at Village Ford after we load up all the trucks. And December 20 at 8:00 AM, we'll be delivering all the gifts. So it's roughly 500 households, 520 households, somewhere in there. But we get right around 1,000 kids every year that we serve. So it's, like Councilwoman Herrick said, we've been around 102 years now serving the community. So it's a, it's been a constant. Everybody knows that you can depend on the Goodfellows for that No Child Without a Christmas. And we've been blessed to have many successful people and business owners right here in this community that were recipients of the Dearborn Goodfellows.
Yeah, that's for sure, yeah.
It's nice seeing the money circulate back in the community and
Full circle.
To help those, yeah.
Yeah, full circle. Appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Councilman Hamud, you good?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you.
You guys have a good night.
Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
Item 39, resolution by councilmembers Paris and Enos, authorizing the mayor's office to renew the citywide membership with the Conference of Western Wayne in the amount of $12,185 for the 2025-2026 fiscal year, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The membership of the Conference of Western Wayne provides the City of Dearborn the collective voice in the nation's capital on federal policy and advocacy issues that concern our city. Membership also networks the city's elected and top-appointed officials with experience and ability, experience and the ability of municipal leaders nationwide, and provides us access to resources to promote innovation and manage common issues such as veteran homelessness, job training location programs, local water infrastructure projects, and other transportation programs. The mayor's office is requesting the authorization to renew the citywide membership of the Conference of Western Wayne for the amount of, for fiscal year 25-26, and the citywide membership for the amount for $12,185, which is the same as last year. Any questions or comments on it? All right, any objection to unanimous roll? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
We have a walk-on item. It's going to be item number 40. It's a resolution in need of an offer and support, authorizing the mayor to execute the inter-local government agreement with the Dearborn Public Schools for the enforcement of camera-based school plus stop armed violations.
Okay, offered by Councilwoman Herrick, supported by Councilman Paris. All right, I believe, Mayor, did you have anything to add to this? This one was in the past. We had brought this forward. Is there anything different? All right, any questions or comments from my colleagues? Okay, unanimous roll shall be attached. Next item.
There are no further items on tonight's agenda.
All right. So next, we got a few items from the council. I have a few things I wanted to mention. I'm going to start with our HR Director, Danielle Cheney. I'm going to start with our HR Director, Danielle Cheney. I don't believe she's with us today, but I wanted to recognize the recent passing of her father in September and offer condolence to her and her family. It's a very tough situation when you lose a parent, and, you know, I had the unfortunate situation of having that. Mrs. Cheney is an exceptional HR Director. She is a tremendous person, and I'm sure that her father is very proud of the work she's done, and we just wanted to recognize and make sure that she knew that our condolences from the Council for her and her family. I did have a few other things before I opened up to my Council members. A couple of good newses from Ford. Ford Motor Company, of course, our hometown Fortune 500 Corporation, is introducing that they're going to be building a tremendous amount of vehicles that are being moved here to Dearborn, that is going to create additional 900 new jobs at the Forge Rouge Complex and 100 new positions in Kentucky. So we do appreciate that. I know that some of my colleagues also were able to attend Sunday. Tremendous event for the world headquarters of Ford Motor Company being reopened and moved from Southfield Iconic Building on South of the Michigan Avenue. It was a great event, was very well-run, and it was a great opportunity to see the new headquarters. So it does look like a coffee shop inside. It does give a younger hip vibe, and it's a great opportunity for Ford to reinvest in the city at Dearborn, and they're going nowhere at all. I want to congratulate, next, our Fire Chief Joe Murray, who was recently elected as President of the Western Wayne Fire Department Mutual Aid Association for the 10th year in a row.
Wow.
Chief? I mean, either you're doing a great job, 10 years in a row, you've got to be doing a great job. We appreciate that. Yeah, the Mutual Aid Association is a very big deal, folks. When I came on the Council, I didn't realize how much we do call on mutual aids and how the communities work together, so we like to thank that we're not sitting back and taking the lead, Chief, so I appreciate that. I wanted to congratulate our Dearborn resident, Judge, and our previous magistrate, Judge Hilal Farhat, on his appointment to the chief pro temp of the Wayne County Circuit Court. He's a great friend of mine. He's been a longstanding magistrate in the city of Dearborn and lawyer in the city of Dearborn, was appointed to the Circuit Court a few years back, maybe two or three years back, and now has been appointed as the chief pro temp of the court. So it's a really big deal. We do appreciate it. I do have, lastly, Divine Child football team. We wanted to congratulate them tremendously. But there's still a lot more work to do. They beat the number-one seed in their division in a great football game against Harper Woods. There was coverage all over. Unfortunately, I was out of town. I did see it in the papers, but I would like my colleague, Councilman Enos, who was actually at the game, to give us a little bit more about that.
Great football game. Great football game. Go Falcons! I've had the pleasures of having been to all three of Divine Child's playoff games. This past Saturday, they played the perfect high school football game against a team that was a heavy favorite, Harper Woods. They took the air out of the football, won the time of possession battle, the field position battle, the turnover battle, and the best battle, the toughness battle. There is some old Estrel guys on the staff, Dan Regan, Michael Shashanian, and his dad, former Councilman Mark Shashanian. I had to slip that in there.
Absolutely. Those are Dearborn guys, too.
Great job by the whole staff. There was a Fortune guy, too, that's right. Great job by the whole staff, coaches, trainers, managers, all of you, great teamwork. You have to give the players credit for executing the game plan. They have tremendous leadership led by Marcelo Viti, who's a throwback, tough-as-nails type of a football player. It was fun watching him play and having his teammates having his back the whole game. It was a great team win. Now, it doesn't get any easier as they take on defending Division IV state champion Goodrich High School at Stony Creek High School this Saturday at 1:00. Go Falcons, keep scrapping. This whole city is behind you. Good luck.
Absolutely. Go Falcons! That's all from myself. Anything from my colleagues? Councilwoman Herrick?
I would like to give a shout-out to the Michigan Lights at Camp Dearborn, Michigan Bright Lights. The Council had a sneak peek at what's coming up, and the Mayor's may be able to give us a little bit more information about it, but here in Dearborn at Peace Park West and Peace Park East, we're going to have holiday lights. And, but out at Camp Dearborn, if you have an opportunity to take a drive out there, I think it rivals if you drive Heinz Park to look at the lights there. Just a fabulous light show for the holidays combined with music. You can listen to it in your car as you drive through. And then they'll even have, there are certain nights that there's designated that they're going to have a drone show. We had a sample of that when we were out there last week, and it's just incredible. Beautiful experience for people of all ages, whole family, young and old, the music and the lights out at Camp Dearborn, and then at our peace parks coming up. And details about that are on the city website, and the Mayor might want to talk a little bit about that. I also want to talk about one of my favorite holiday events at the Dearborn Historical Museum. Coming up on Saturday, December 5th, is the annual Holiday Tea. Sorry, I'm looking for the exact date. I'm sorry, Saturday, December 6th, from 1:00 till 4:00 PM at the Commandant's Quarters. Our historic, part of our historical museum is our Commandant's Quarters, and out there is a free tea, tea and cookies for anybody who'd like to stop by, be served with folks who are in period costumes, and visit our holiday displays that are at the Commandant's Quarters as well. It's decorated. If you haven't been to the Commandant's Quarters, it's been renovated over the last few years. Painting inside has been done, and it's just a really neat experience for families. Outdoors, there are activities for kids, and so take a look at our historical museums, Commandant's Quarters, that day. Another favorite holiday activity, they may already be sold out, but our Garden Club of Dearborn, same day, December 6th, has a holiday hollyberry brunch, and it's a wonderful event. Men are welcome, but it's mostly women wearing their holiday sweaters, great for multiple generations, and the Garden Club, that's their major fundraiser for scholarships that they present to students who are going to be studying science, biology-related fields. But it's a lot of fun. If you have not been and you are interested, look on the, look for the Garden Club of Dearborn online, or contact me. I'll be happy to connect you. But it's a wonderful brunch and amazing raffle baskets. So one of my favorite holiday traditions coming up. And I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. I'm looking forward to spending time with my son, who's coming in from out of town with his fiance, so I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. What I will say, though, is Leslie already took my idea of making sure to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up. I wear a special tie for all these holidays, and this one I have just to remind myself to tell everybody, "Happy Thanksgiving." So you already did it.
Thank you. Well, you can, too. Thank you.
All right, thank you, yes. Yeah, I did miss that, but I do appreciate it. I kind of think of Ford, I have a turkey bowl with my young children that are all 30s and then 20s, so if you see me coming in next week and my arm's a little hurt, I am the official quarterback, so. Great time, Thanksgiving is a great time to go ahead.
It's a great time for Thanksgiving, thank you, to go ahead and spend with your family, so I do appreciate that. So we are all set from the Council. Mayor, anything from yourself or the administration?
Nothing at this time.
All right, Mr. Clerk, anything from yourself or your department?
You know what? Yes, real quickly.
Yes.
Couple of weeks ago, we had an election, so I wanted to congratulate the 27,000 winners that we had. The 27,000 winners, of course, are the number of Dearborn residents who exercise their right to vote and their duty to vote, and I want to thank them. The number was slightly higher than we normally get, it was about 35%, but I appreciate the support of the voters, 27,000 strong this election. So thank you, and thanks to them.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. My understanding, too, that we had one of the highest turnouts in the state.
Percentage-wise, correct.
Yes. Which is, yeah, percentage is what matters, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So that's, it was a great, you know, when you, when you have that, it always helps. You've got to come out and vote, so we do appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, at this time, Mr. Clerk, we'll move to our second public comment, and there's no more walk-ons, correct?
Correct.
Okay, we've got to get that light on. All right, thanks. And so now we're on our second public comment. Same rules again for all people here wishing to speak. Thank you for being patient for our business to go through. So I'm going to call the cards. If there's anyone, we did have two people before, I'm just going to call their names that they were not here at that time, Youssef Nasser or Christopher English. If they're not, then we'll go to the next one. Just a, no, just a kind reminder, three-minute limitation, and the clerk will let you know when there's 30 seconds left, okay? And thank you. And just a kind reminder to address the Council, you're here to address the Council, and be respectful of everybody in the audience. If you'd like to speak, you're more than welcome to speak and come up, but please no outbursts, okay? We have Andre Williams?
How you doing? It's good to be here. I speak here as a, of course, a resident of Detroit, a veteran, someone who's firm in my belief as a Christian, as an American nationalist. We came here today to send a message that American towns and cities will not be Islamified. We do not want this in our country. We're against that, and it's a message for white Americans and black Americans. The identity of our country is firmly rooted in our history and who we are as Christians. We should never reject that. We should never go past that. We should never let that down. We should put it up and put it forward. We have two prime examples, one in Europe and one happening in Nigeria, the slaughter of Christians in Nigeria and the invasion of Europe from Islamic countries. Now, of course, we know that our foreign policy for the last 40 years have been detrimental to the United States on the behalf of Israel. I oppose that, but does not mean that we're going to open our borders to a bunch of people into our country. We're no longer going to do that. Gen Z, I believe, is opposed to mass migration. We're opposed to destruction of our country. We're opposed to everything that the prior generations have allowed. We're no longer going to allow that, and I speak firmly on that and proudly, as a black American, as an American, as a Christian, against what is happening in our country. I hear about all this hate that we brought to Dearborn, but myself and people who've been here with us, we've been met with a great hate since we've been walking up and down the street, Michigan Avenue. I've been spit on. I've been called a house negro, a coon, everything under the book because I'm black and I care about my country. Imagine that. That's the nation we stand in. If you stand for your country, you're called everything under the book. If you stand for your people, whether you're white or black, Hispanic, Arab, you're called the enemy of the people. That's the time we live in, and I'm disgusted by it. Walking with white Americans saying that I'm a Christian and I believe in this country feels like I'm in the 1950s. It feels like I'm a, I'm a, somebody from the South, a white person from the South walking with a black person. To see on the other side the pain is disgusting. The fact that Americans cannot be proud of their faith and stand firm in their faith against what we're seeing across the Western world and to be opposed to it and be met with calls of Nazi and fascist, well, that's what you want to call us. If that's what you want to bring to us, hatred, well, we will stand firm in what we believe regardless of how much you hate us, because our belief is in God, our belief is in our country, our belief is in our people, and we will promote that each and every day until death. I think that's something that our history shows. We are not fearful of anyone.
You have 30 seconds?
We are not fearful of anyone in this country. Americans have built the world. We've bring great things upon this world, and as Christians, we've done much to civilize the world, and we will not allow anyone to tell us we cannot be Christian, that we cannot say what we want in this country because we've built this country into what it is. And we allow people to come over here and have their say. Well, guess what? We say no to Islamification of the United States and all of Western civilization. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, folks, folks, as we indicated, please do not have any outbursts, okay? Next speaker we have is Ahmed Ali Ansi.
Ahmed Ali Ansi, 7441 Kentucky Street.
Did I pronounce it right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Council President, members of the Council, today, Dearborn witnessed two very different kinds of protests. The first was led by Anthony Hudson, someone who arrived here with fear in his heart and stereotypes in his mind, but after walking our streets, visiting our mosque, and speaking with our residents, his entire perception changed. He admitted that the media lied to him, and he, what he found instead was hospitality, kindness, and community. The second protest was the opposite, individuals who came here to shout and chase attention. And to them, I say, "You're still welcome to sit with us, enjoy shawarma, Yemeni tea, and see who we really are. You don't have to agree with us to break bread with us." And to our young people, and to our young people especially, do not give in to these provocations, the attention they crave. They feed off your reaction, your videos, your anger. Show them instead your manners, your character, your discipline. Let them shout into the wind while you embody the values your parents and grandparents raised you with. Over the past year, I prayed in church, I prayed in the mosques, and I visited the churches. Different language, different languages, different traditions, but the same prayer, peace, safety, and unity for our city and our neighbors. At the end of the day, we are not a city of strangers, we are a family of neighbors, and no amount of outside noise will change that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next we have Mr. Anthony Hudson.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I am Anthony Hudson. I am a gubernatorial candidate, and I need you all to understand, I have no affiliation with the anti-American group that came here today to destroy your town. They came for a day. One of them came from Florida, who says he's running for Senate as if that comes out of a crackerjack box. I came here to build a bridge between hate and happiness in your town. I spent four days here last week. First day, day one, a little nervous, didn't know what I was getting into. I hear all the stuff that's printed on the, on the TV or all the stories that are written about you. We build our own image in our head, and it's only fair to come down here and see it for myself, right? I mean, I am an American. I am welcome here. I came down for four days and witnessed something I had never seen before. What the gentleman was talking about over here was his version of America, where the Constitution is set for all Americans. Doesn't matter where you come from. We are all created equals in the eye, equal in the eyes of the Lord. Is it not written? You have freedom of religion in this town, just like I have freedom of religion in Grand Blank, Michigan. I don't impose on you, you don't impose on me. You get up, go to work, do your job, go home and take care of your family. I don't care what you do, because you have the same freedom I have. This group here came to interrupt my peaceful walk. For almost two months, I advertised a peaceful walk. My question is, where were you? You knew about it. I asked you to come walk with us as members of this community, to show strength, to show peace, to show that communities do not exist without unity. Yes, I made my, my comment, Mayor. You have freedom of speech like anyone else, but as an elected official in this town, you should treat every citizen with respect and dignity. The word bigotry means when you don't get along with somebody else's point of view or idea. So I counter that back and say that you were being a bigot that night as well.
Do you have 30 seconds?
If I'm not welcome in Dearborn, should I win this race and become the next governor of Michigan? of Michigan? If you can't apologize to an American citizen, then I'll proclaim that you're not welcome in my state. We are all equal, and we better start acting like it. Leadership needs to lead by example, not from fancy seats behind a podium, but by example. You have to set the tone and the precedence in this community so that people like me don't need a damn vest to come here and walk down your streets peacefully with Muslim citizens of this community.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. All right, next we have Jason Ochs. Is that correct, sir?
No, D Y E. I was trying to write on a...
Okay, is it Jason?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, I did have a speech prepared, but with the events that happened today, I want to make clear of some things here. I've had some Muslim people come up to me and say, if you're coming in peace, how come you're carrying your pistol with you? I got news for you, my friend, that is the peacekeeper. That's what keeps peace in this country. Everybody worried about Sharia law, which we found don't exist, I myself was brainwashed by the lamestream media. I came down here, we had the courage, and we came and talked to people, we entered mosques, we were welcomed with open arms, we didn't have any opposition. We also didn't come down here and say, we're burning your Quran. We also didn't come down here and say, we're throwing bacon on you. By the way, is that what Jesus would do? I don't think so, in any way, shape, or form. It's the most un-Christian Jesus thing that could ever be done, and I would suggest studying to show yourself approved, literally. Now, on to the mayor here. We are a constitutional republic governed by the United States Constitution and the laws. When you are acting in capacity of a mayor, like these gentlemen are acting in capacity of police officers, you are not a Muslim, you are not a Christian, you are not nothing, you are the mayor, you are only to answer to the United States Constitution and that's it. And it's fine, people make mistakes, just apologize. Anthony apologized, that's what men do, you know what I mean? We made mistakes, he made mistakes. Hell, man, we thought we were coming down here and do a friggin' battle, and all we battled was food and coffee, you know what I'm saying? But, hey, man, we've been brainwashed on this stuff since a child, literally, you know? A lot of us went and signed up to go to war and didn't realize who the true enemies were. Now we do, and I think this is their biggest fear. But at the same time, give respect and get respect. I audit police officers, I audit government officials, all these different things. If I come in there and they say, what are you doing? And I go, First Amendment protected activity, how you doing, sir? Guess what? That video don't get nothing for views. If I come in there and they say, what are you doing? And I go, I vote my fifth, get out of my face. Guess what that does? Hundred thousand, twenty thousand, see what I mean? People want the controversy. If this was all for votes and political stuff, we'd have just lied, put a little AI, little AI thing of the prayer, you know what I mean? No, we tell the truth. This is the blue collar, we the people ditch digging campaign.
You have 30 seconds.
This is by the people, for the people, this is the Constitution, this is what it is. It's the only reason I'm helping him. I hate both parties. I think both parties are two wings on the same diseased Masonic bird, to be quite honest with you. I'm about unity and we the people. I've tried to tell Anthony to run on, don't tread on me, you know? Like, we're done with the corruption, and there is corruption, and we're gonna find it, and that's what I do. I sift out government corruption, and then you find out, you know what I mean? Faffo's, my favorite, my favorite line.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
You guys have a good one.
Thank you, sir. All right, next we have Mahmoud Mahsan. Mahmoud Mahsan. All right, is there any, can I really check the overflow, or is there anybody left in that overflow? All right, I'll put it aside, chief, if anybody, if you don't mind. No, okay. Cam Hi? Next we have Cam Hi.
One second.
Okay.
Hi, Cam Pigby. I'm a journalist, I'm not a protester, this is my badge, okay? Today on the streets of Dearborn, I was pepper sprayed, maced by protesters because I asked them simply why they were harassing and touching another individual who had stated repeatedly that he was only on their side of the street to talk to them and have a dialogue. My phone was smashed, you can see the broken camera right there, they stole $50 out of my pocket, and they stole my microphone receiver. I went and I told one of your officers, badge number 3668, that this had happened. He told me there was nothing that could be done about it unless I went to the station. I told him, I can't go to the station, I'm working, I'm doing my job. He said, I'm working too. I said, yeah, and your job is to protect me and all of the people that are out here today, okay? So we said that I could go into the station later, I told him, you're never gonna catch the guy if I go into the station later, he's gonna leave, he's dressed head to toe in black block. I filmed the whole thing, but he had a mask on his face. You'll never, ever get an opportunity to arrest that person ever again if you don't go and get him right now. He said, sir, I can't leave my post. Five minutes later, I caught him in the parking lot on a personal phone call, okay? Repeatedly today, I watched people that are in this room get attacked by other people that are in this room. I watched your officers not respond to those attacks repeatedly. Then I saw somebody who was in this group, which I, again, I'm a journalist, I'm just documenting what's going on, and I'm here to tell you what's going on. I saw somebody in this group get arrested. I asked the officer, Tavius Corpus, please articulate probable cause for arresting this person. They refused to. I asked name and badge number. They refused to give me their name and badge number as a member of the press with my badge clearly displayed. They would not tell me why they were arresting this person, they just did it, okay? Yesterday, I was exploring Dearborn, I came here just to, to document this, from Seattle as a journalist, okay? I was exploring Dearborn, I walked up and down Michigan Avenue, there wasn't very many people out, then we wanted to hear the call to prayer that we've heard so much about, so we went to a mosque, and at that mosque, I was followed by a drone. If I moved forward, the drone moved forward. If I went backwards, the drone went backwards. I went to a gas station, and that drone waited outside of the gas station, just above the door, for me to leave so it could begin following me again. I was followed by vehicles, and I was followed by individuals on foot. There was a lot of talking here today about sexism, so I'd like to quote the prophet Muhammad, okay? One of my favorite quotes from the prophet Muhammad, "A woman's testimony is worth half that of a man's due to the deficiency of her mind. God created two sexes, one superior and one inferior." That's why your women wear hijabs, because they're inferior to men. That's why most Muslim countries, they can't leave their homes without permission of a male guardian. Is my time up?
You have 30 seconds.
Oh, 30 seconds, okay, great.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think, I shouldn't feel like a Demi in my country, that's what I feel like in Dearborn, Michigan. It doesn't feel like home, I feel like a Demi, a second-class citizen, which is what Christians are in the majority of Muslim countries, Demis, second-class citizens. In the policing in this city, that's exactly what happens, and I know rank-and-file officers in pretty much every city usually want to take care of these problems. You're the one giving the orders, Mr. Mayor. These guys definitely want to do something about them. Their business, look at them. These guys are all business, your orders. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. Please, folks, we don't, no outbursts, please. Uh, next we have, next we have...
You said one officer got kicked out.
Sir, sir. Uh, we have, I believe, Jaden Scott, is there Scott? Okay.
Hello, my name is Jaden Scott, I'm from Bay City, Michigan. Guys, I'm honored to be here today in the largest Muslim city in America, and personally let the city council know that as of today, November 18th, Patriot Governor Greg Abbott has designated CARES and the Muslim Brotherhood a domestic terrorist organization. Expect that to follow across the country. Mayor Abu, we know your relationships with George Soros and the Muslim Brotherhood and CARES. After Anthony Hudson made his post, you had a coordinated... It's my three minutes, thank you. No outbursts, thank, thank you.
All right.
You led a coordinated attack through the press releases with CARES, we know it, and we are ashamed of you. You speak as a representative of the Islamic community. Today, Christians marched through this, this city because of your comments. You are representative, hold yourself to higher decorum. We're in Dearborn, Michigan, this is the home of Henry Ford. This man put America on wheels and also wrote a famous book that spoke about another takeover of our country. Muslims and Christians, take a look up here. There's Muslims and there's Christians.
Sir. Sir, address the council.
There's Muslims and there's Christians up here. There is one man who stands out. We are all Gentile to these people, we're all Goyam, and we must stand firm. Christ is King, America first, Michigan first, patriots first. Mayor Abu, the Muslim Brotherhood is designated a domestic terrorist, and so is the CARES organization in Texas. Expect that to follow across America. Everybody have a great day.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, Mr. Edward Lang. Commander Madhu, we just, you guys gotta keep it down, okay?
In 1900, the world was 30% white. Fast forward 125 years, we are down to 7%. The Islamification of Europe is particularly aimed at the destruction of white people. The Islamification of America is aiming to meet the same goal. Our people, white, Christian, European, Western civilization, we built the arts, we built the Colosseum, we have ran the world into the industrial age, and now, this people here, the Muslim community is looking to drag us back. They're looking to oppress women, oppress homosexuals, they're looking to destroy everything that makes America great. President Trump, send ICE, send ICE into Dearborn. These people have overstayed their visas, they're H1B chain migration invaders, and they have come to this country to destroy our way of life. We know exactly your laws in your book about lying to our faces, pretending to be Americans, wearing your suits, but that doesn't happen anywhere else where you guys are in charge. There are 53 Muslim-majority countries, and in all of them, it is tyranny, destruction, it is shithole living. We have to call it what it is. You guys don't live like we do, we don't want you in our country. We will come and eat your shawarma in Somalia, okay? We don't need it here in Michigan, we don't need it in any part of America. We have, we have a right to self-determination. Our founding fathers fought and died for our posterity, for white Americans, and we're being driven out. You come here, and you marry four or five women, and you outbreed us, you change the laws, you make all of our country look like the places that you fled from. We don't want you here. Respectfully, get the fuck out of my country. I don't want you here. We don't want you here. I don't want you here, I don't want you here.
That's fine, sir, just...
This is our country, and the people, the veterans, the World War II veterans, that's blood has soaked for our constitutional republic, are taking a look around Europe, they're taking a look around America, and they're saying, what the hell did we fight for? We have been taken over without a single shot fired. You guys are outbreeding insidious parasites on the American way of life. You will never look like us, you will never eat like us, you won't build buildings like us, you are nothing, you can build nothing, just like President Trump's great American friends have said. You guys are not us, and get the fuck out. America first, America only. God bless America. Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Thank you.
Jesus is King, Jesus is King.
Thank you.
Jesus is King, Jesus is...
Your time has expired. Order in the chambers. Order in the chambers. Guys, get, sir, get these guys, guys, you gotta go back to the, everybody back to your seats, or you'll be removed. All right. All right, Mr. Anthony Deegan. Mr. Deegan, do you want to speak, or you're, you're good? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, that is quite something to follow up.
Is your name, your name...
Oh, I'm sorry, my name Anthony Deegan, longtime Dearborn resident. I just want to say, I've, I, I kinda went into the, the march midstream and have seen everything that's taken place, and this is a religious conversation today, and I think that God is extremely grieved. I've seen hate, I've seen anger, I've seen a lot of pride. In the cross, we see the embodiment of Christ, we see the embodiment of Christianity, its love, its self-sacrifice, its humility, and we've seen today and in the past few weeks, hate, self-serving of the highest order in many camps, and we've seen pride and arrogance. And I think there's a way to disagree, and there's a way not to disagree. As you all know, I have come here, I've disagreed, I think that this, what's happening now is an outgrowth of the comments that have taken place in here, and I've disagreed with some of those comments, but there is, this is not the way to battle that, and to attach one's name to Christ and do that is maligning the name of Christ. I talked to one, I got a chance to talk to one of the people who tried to burn a Quran, and as a, as a Christian, as somebody involved in ministry who reads the Bible, I say, I say to myself, how does this serve anything? How does this help anything? And so I asked him, where, where do you find this in the New Testament? Is this emulating Christ? Does this change hearts and minds for Christ? Are you doing what Jesus would do? And he, and he said, no, he doesn't find it in the New Testament, and he doesn't care. And so, you know, if, if you want to do your own thing, you can do your own thing, if you want to be hateful, you can be hateful, if you want to take something that is disagreeable and turn it into something times 10, you can do that, but don't attach Christ's name to that. That is not who Christ is. So I want, I want to take this opportunity to read what the Bible does say about this matter. It's from 1 Corinthians, chapter 13, it's known as the chapter of love. It says, "If I speak with the tongues of men and of angels, but do not have love, I have become a noisy gong or a clanging cymbal. And if I have the gift of prophecy and know all the mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have all faith so as to remove mountains..."
You have 30 seconds.
"...but not, but not have love, I am nothing. And if I give all my possessions to feed the poor, and if I surrender my body to be burned, but do not have love, it profits me nothing. Love is patient, love is kind, it is not jealous, does not brag, is not puffed up, it does not act unbecomingly, does not seek its own, is not provoked, does not take into account a wrong suffered. It does not rejoice in unrighteousness, but rejoices with the truth. It bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never fails, but if there are gifts of prophecy, they will be done away; if there are tongues, they will cease; if there is knowledge, it will be done away."
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Sure, you could, you finishing? You could finish your thought, is that the last, just finish the last thought.
I'll just finish the last thought. Read the rest of the chapter, it's great. Matthew 11, 29 from Christ's own words, "Take my yoke upon you and learn from me, for I am gentle and humble in heart, and you will find rest for your souls." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. Mr. Mike Hashem.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Hashem, and I'm here today as a Muslim, an Arab-American, and a Republican. I am proud to call Dearborn my home. And let's be completely honest, the outsiders who showed up here pretending to speak for Republicans weren't here for dialogue or ideas. They came here for hate, chaos, and cheap theatrics, hoping to intimidate a peaceful community. They are un-American. Let's be complete, they even tried to burn the Holy Quran, not because they stand for anything, but because without shock value, they're irrelevant. When you have no principles, no integrity, no courage, you resort to stunts meant to get attention from the worst corners of the internet. And let's make something clear, I led the charge to elect President Donald Trump in our union.
Mr. Hashem, please just address the council.
And it was the Muslim community and the Arab-Americans that voted and got President Donald Trump elected in the state of Michigan, and this is the greatest nation on the planet. These agitators throw on the Republican label like a Halloween costume and a cheap suit from Walmart, but their behavior is pure Antifa wannabes, chaos, loud, reckless, directionless. I mean, they had to use GPS to drive a freaking bus, right? One's from Seattle, he's not even from here, doesn't know us. Real Republicans stand for faith, family, stability, and dignity. These people stand for whatever gets them a viral clip. Their goal wasn't free speech, their goal was intimidation, an emotional and psychological attack on a community they don't understand and don't respect. And all they did was expose themselves as extremists and terrorists. Those are the true terrorists. That's who the FBI takes down day in and day out, trying to kill our governor. I urge the public to not give attention to these traveling chaos merchants who barge into cities they don't live in trying to provoke anger for their own online fame. Dearborn will not be defined by outsiders performing for a camera, and they will never speak for me, not as a Muslim, not as an Arab-American, and definitely not as a Republican. And let me tell you, Republicans hate these types of clowns. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, thank you. Mr. Chadwick, Chadwick Tillman? Yes, sir.
If it looks as good like this at Walmart, let me know, I'll buy it and I'll wear it. Good evening, council, Mr. President, other members, Mayor Abu. My name is Chadwick Tillman, I'm running for state senate in District 35. Two months ago, Pastor Ted Barham stood right here in this allotted three minutes to raise legitimate concerns about honoring... about honoring a publisher who has openly praised Hezbollah and Hamas, or excuse me, Hamas, as resistance. These are terrorist organizations. Instead of letting him finish, this mayor here launched into a personal attack. Shameful, shameful, you should wipe that smirk off your face. He called him a bigot and Islamophobe. And what I could agree with Anthony Hudson is that you are a bigot yourself. He told him on camera that he was not welcome in Dearborn and that the day that he moves away will be celebrated with a parade. I think we should put you on a camel and parade you right on out. Several council members and the city attorney then jumped in, repeatedly interrupted, and to try, try to shut him down before his time was up. Not a good look. And that was not leadership. That was intimidation. That was an elected official and this entire dais telling a Christian resident that his viewpoint is not tolerated in the city he calls home. And what disgusts me even more is what this mayor had to say outside this chamber. Rejected the idea that immigrants should assimilate to American culture and language. Refusing to call Hamas and Hezbollah terrorist organizations while American hostages, hostages are still held and American blood has been shed fighting those same groups. Those are not values of the America I swore to defend. Those are not values of people who want to reshape this country into something it has never been. I come here tonight to say clearly, Dearborn is still part of America.
Your time has expired.
The United States. The First Amendment still applies here, whether you are a Christian, Muslim, Jewish, or anything else. No resident should ever be told by their mayor that they are not welcome simply for speaking truth in a public meeting. I expect better from every single person on this dais. I expect you to protect free speech, not punish it. And I expect the mayor, Abu, to apologize to Pastor Barham and to every resident he insulted that night.
Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next we have Mr. John Cena. John Cena. Okay, Jimmy Jones. Jimmy John. Jimmy Johns. Mr. Ted Barham.
Ted Barham, Dearborn resident. I feel I should apologize for some of the things that have been said tonight. I wish I could take them back. I appreciated people apologizing to me when I experienced something a couple of months ago. And when people do something purporting to be Christians, I'd like to apologize for that. I had some things I wanted to say tonight. I was going to refer to the foiled terror plot. I'm not going to talk about that. One thing I would like to say is that the Lord Jesus was from the Middle East. So I don't consider that Christianity is a white thing. I consider that I respect people from the Middle East because that's where my Lord Jesus came from and the Christian message. I feel so much has been said tonight. I don't feel like I need to say much more. Just, you know, I'm still kind of grieving over some of the things that have been said. I appreciate other things that have been said, including by my friend Anthony. One other thing that's been in the news has been the Islamic cult of prayer. And so I'll just end with this. I appreciate Mrs. Andrea Unger's position about, you know, wanting to quiet that down. But I think another way of dealing with that is something that we've been doing for a year and a half now, which is a Christian cult of prayer. And that would show people that Dearborn is a positive place that allows equal rights to different people. And one Christian cult of prayer that a friend of mine has been putting out is this in Arabic. I'll do my best to read the Arabic. I'm a little bit lazy in studying Arabic, but I'll do my best. And this is what he sings over loudspeakers from John 3:16. "Hakada habba allah al'alam hatta ba'dala ibnahu al-waqeed lekay la yakhlika kol min yuminu bihi bal yakun lahoo al-haya abediyah." God loved the world so much that he gave his one and only Son so that whoever believes in him will not perish, but have eternal life. Probably the best-known verse in the Bible. It's not a message of hate. It's a message of love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Robin Birkson? Birkson? Okay, thank you. Next we have Lauren Linderman?
Hi, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I actually was. Someone came up and asked me to, so this is the very last minute. I did not feel prepared. But my name is Lauren Linderman. I live in West Dearborn on Nowland Street. And I love my neighborhood. I love my city. I'm American. My family has been in America since the 1640s. My family has been in Dearborn for 200 years. Anyone that's familiar with Dearborn will recognize my last name, Linderman, as well as the other last names in my family, like Van Houten, proudly in association, oh, and proudly in association with Detroit Police and Wayne County Homeland Security. My husband's last name, Serta. My great-grandpa built some of the homes here. My family's buried in the cemetery on Outer Drive and Military. My grandpa, great-uncles, great-grandpa, great-great-grandpa, and my father-in-law served in Vietnam, Korea, World War II, World War I, and the Civil War, all under the American military. My beautiful grandmother made machine guns while my grandfather was deployed. I am fifth-generation Dearborn High graduate and my grandma's brother was the mayor of Dearborn Heights and his daughter is the Honorable Judge Van Houten in Detroit. Yes, I am Muslim. No, I am not Arab. Neither is my husband. And my husband was also not born Muslim. And I know that that's a lot to take in, but I hope that the protesters can watch this back and rewind it to kind of break down some of the stereotypes that they have here tonight. I'd also like to say that I was raised fundamental Baptist for 21 years of my life. My parents still are. I've been Muslim for seven. And I'm married into a family of Mexican Catholics. And let me tell you, none of my loving family has ever acted like some of the ignorant people here have tonight. And I can tell you that they never will. What I was going to talk about tonight was recently the snap cuts have been heavy on my heart. I'm human, a mother, a neighbor, and a Muslim. And all of those things require me to care about others, especially those who need help. On Halloween, I placed a bin on my front lawn so that those in need could come take whatever they need while walking in the neighborhood. And by the time I got back from taking my kids trick-or-treating, the bin was almost empty. I think we often assume that the people we know are okay, that these issues aren't affecting us or our neighborhood. But food insecurity is happening right now here in our own neighborhood. And for the past two weekends, I'm sure many of you guys have seen on social media that I have posted again on Facebook about more food being added to my porch and the outcome has been amazing. Our community has showed up. I whole, I had people go shopping and add dozens of eggs, bread, milk, fruit, vegetables, and more. Dozens of families were able to come and take what they need. People left messages on my electric doorbell, knocked on my door personally to speak to me and say thank you. And an old man even left a really sweet note in my mailbox saying that he wasn't mobile, but he was able to walk down the street and grab food. Local stores saw me shopping and added to my donation, including Homeland Market on Monroe without ever being asked. I also spoke with the principal of Deval Elementary School to make sure that our kids are being fed. And after posting, people donated hundreds of dollars to go toward preparing food packs for the children in our community. I went shopping and filled my pickup truck with shelf-perishable food and parked out in front of Deval while my baby napped in the car and I waited for school pickup. Parents showed up to pick up their kids, asked what I was doing, grabbed a bag, and started filling these bags to be donated to Deval. These bags are now at Deval to be sent home with students on Friday to help alleviate stress on parents. And I'd like to make sure other schools in Dearborn have similar resources. I've had people message that they're also taking the initiative to help in similar ways. I just want to sit and say thank you to my neighbors, my community, and my friends for showing up and caring about people, even if we don't know them. I am so proud to be from Dearborn as my family has been for hundreds of years and hopefully I will continue to be from Dearborn.
Thank you very much. All right. Raldoff Rodriguez? Rodriguez? Mr. Adib Adal Moszep. Adal, I'm sorry. Adal Moszep. You put the middle initials, I apologize. So I skipped up there, sir.
No worries. President Sarini, Mayor Hamud, City Council, Mr. Clerk, good evening. I just, I actually came here to speak to you today on something totally different. But I wanted just to address some of the things that were mentioned at this podium. And it's disheartening to see those comments. But Dearborn is an amazing city. And if those outsiders haven't seen it on a daily basis, I advise them to visit our libraries, our schools, our Henry Ford College that we're truly proud of. And I know many speakers have spoken of Dearborn and its greatness. And I'm not going to add much to what they have said. But I'd like to thank all of those residents who have avoided the protesters because that's exactly what they wanted, is the attention. So I wanted to speak to you, council, today. I have spoken to the mayor about the subject. And it is dear to me, as somebody who wants to advocate for all residents to utilize the utilities and utilize also the civic center that we do have at the city. Every year, probably I could go back to 2016, 2017, the city will have the data. You do have, offer discounted rates on Black Friday to utilize the center for the whole year. It was unfortunate this year that I found out that's not the option. I know many families wait until Black Friday so they can sign up for the whole year, which is something affordable for those, especially middle-income to low-income families. So I ask council to hopefully review this and make the civic center affordable for everyday residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moszep. Yeah, Mayor. Mr. Moszep, if you'd like, if you'd like, he's going to respond because I wasn't aware of the Black Friday. Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Moszep. I know we spoke. So the Black Friday deal ended a few years ago. Right now, they waived the enrollment fee as it pertains to the affordability of the membership. The membership is discounted, obviously, for Dearborn residents relative to non-Dearborn residents. But we don't wait for the annual discount on Black Friday to offer affordability. At any day of the year, if you are somebody of need, you can actually go into the civic center, provide the financials, and they will discount your membership, ensuring that it's accessible and affordable to all families. Similar to the poverty discount you can receive on property taxes, similar fashion to civic center. If you have a family in need, you can provide financials and they will discount your plan and you don't have to wait for any sort of annual offering on a Black Friday. So just want to communicate that publicly. That program has always been around. We've improved it. And as it pertains to like a competitive perspective, the civic center is still one of the cheapest memberships compared to any major private outlet across the region with respect to all the offerings that we have.
If I may ask?
Yes, of course.
I mean, that's great that we're doing that. This is the first time that I, I found about it from you. So it would be nice to publicize that for those low-income families. But I'd say for middle-income families, it's still a high rate. Just looking up the rates from 2016 and I understand the pricing of everything has gone up so much. So it is understandable. But I do know that the civic center is subsidized by the city, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
It is. Mr. Moszep, you're correct. And you got our commitment to look at it as well. The mayor had made a very top priority of recreation, as you're aware.
Yes.
And we put a tremendous amount of money into that facility and I'm sure you're aware of that. So, which was due and needed to be done. So you got my commitment during our legislative budget hearings to look at that and see what we can do. I was always for the separation of Dearborn resident and non-resident because they're taxpayers.
Correct.
To have a different rate. But I know that we have delegated that authority to the mayor. But we will definitely look at it because it has reached a point where I've had people did say, "It is getting a little bit more expensive." But there was a reason. We invested millions of dollars in there. And I know you've seen that. Which was, which was needed. And the membership people, the membership has definitely risen. So, but we will definitely look at it, I promise. We'll, we'll call on that and look at it as well. Thank you, Mr. Moszep. Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hamud.
Just talking about civic center affordability, I also want to say one thing I'm really happy about that I think Councilwoman Herrick was big on was the Silverseek Sneakers Program for seniors also. I think it's a huge deal for a lot of people and we'll just take a moment to advertise that. I think you guys did a lot of good work and finally got it in. So there's also subsidized rates for senior citizens for our Dearborn Civic Center.
Thank you. That is correct. We do have a final speaker, Mr. Isaac.
How you doing, Mayor Hamud?
Just your phone.
My name's Isaac. Yes, I was here, a question. I was listening to the other guys from the other side speaking, saying that they don't want Muslims here. They want to deport us, they want to take us away. We'll gladly leave. If we leave, we're going to take what belongs to ours. That's the glasses they wear. Without Islam, without the Muslims, there'll be no glasses for them to wear. There'll be no TVs, no cars, no clock, no time. That's Bahu Haytham, the father of optics. And algorithm, yeah, algebra. Without the Muslims, they wouldn't be able to count their money. They wouldn't be able to build skyscrapers. So I don't see them here no more. They're gone, but that's all I have to put out for them. Without us, this world wouldn't be nothing. Alhamdulillah.
Thank you. Thank you. How about that? Okay, Councilwoman Herrick?
My mic's not on. Isaac, I thank you for making that comment. I think if you, if people from Dearborn even, if you have not visited our Arab-American National Museum, you definitely should. Because one of the most powerful displays there is the photos on the wall and the short stories about Arab-Americans who have contributed to the United States through science, math, the arts. And some people are surprised when they see that history goes back a long way of the contributions of Arab-Americans. So thank you for pointing that out.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone else here? We have exhausted all the cards. Anyone else here would like to address the city council regarding city business? Sure, step forward.
My name is Joseph Rajo, 9958 Frederick Street, Dearborn. I first want to congratulate the mayor and your wife on your new family member. God bless you all. I am a student of history, a teacher of history, and a writer of history. And some of the false representations of historical perspective here tonight, I stand to correct. First of all, the Capitol buildings in Washington, DC were built by slaves. First of all, the Capitol buildings in Washington, DC were built by slaves, slaves that were looked on as an inferior race that had no rights. It was these slaves that built those municipal buildings. Secondly, this country was built by immigrants that came from all over the world, different religions, different ethnic groups, different cultures. They are responsible for building this country and maintaining it. And if I would say anything with regard to the anti-immigrant activity, we need a fresh new blood to revive this country. And you're not going to get it with the old song and dance, some of which I've heard here tonight. It'll come from new immigrants coming into the country and fostering a new growth, a new bloodline in this country. So, God bless the country. God bless all of you, and let's stand where the justice is and stand where the right is. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Herrick. All right. At this time, we have completed our council meeting.
If I can make a remark?
Yes, mayor, of course.
Is that fine?
Yeah. It's on, mayor.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to kind of share the story of my day a bit. You know, earlier today, before any headlines, before any marches, before any noise, I was just a father. I was in the car with my daughters. I dropped them off at school as I do every morning, and as we got closer, they both started singing their ABCs. Now, my oldest says it confidently now, even the elemental P part. The younger sibling, obviously still stumbling through the letters, just trying to keep up, is all little siblings try to do. And then they wrapped their arms around one another, bid goodbye, and entered their classroom. And that was the start of the day. And I remember thinking in that moment that this is who I'm doing this for, that the world that they're inheriting, the city that they are growing up in, and the example that we set for them. After I came to City Hall, where I met with small business owners from the Dixverner Business Corridor, from the South End, I met with small mom-and-pop business owners, many of them were immigrants, many building something from nothing. And we shared the news that we were expanding the facade grant program from Morn Avenue to the South End, a grant up to $100,000 for small businesses. One business owner pulled me aside, smiling ear to ear. He had just seen what the new business grants could do, and he saw a rendering for how uplift for his shop with designs rooted in both Arab heritage and classic American architecture. He said, "Mayor, we've never had a government believe in us like this, and he can't wait to pass this on to the next generation. That is Dearborn. That's the city that I know, and that's the future that we deserve." And maybe that's why today hit a little bit differently. Because while we were building up small businesses, while children were singing on their way to school, dozens of protests were marching through our streets shouting about Muslims in America. Some of them were misled, others came with hate in their hearts. One man wrapped a Quran in bacon and screamed at residents, and as I tuned in live, I heard him calling others monkeys and saying that they are incompatible with America. And he did this ironically while walking past our historic nativity scene at the old City Hall, a symbol of peace and a symbol that is sacred for thousands of Christian families in our city and Muslim families as well. And yet, even then, Dearborn showed who we truly were. I saw one resident, a local barber, on his story. He shouted back, "Though no matter what you tell me, I want you to know I still love you as my brother." He bought a case of water to start passing out to everybody marching by, and he told them that "I hope the ignorance that has encapsulated your heart shatters one day." That is Dearborn, a place where neighbors show up for one another, where hurt is met with compassion, where hate is rooted out by dignity, by decency, and by our shared humanity. And so, tonight, as those marchers walk the same road we walk every Memorial Day Parade, the longest-reigning Memorial Day Parade in the state of Michigan, celebrating our centennial anniversary in 2026, the same street where we honor the fallen heroes who gave their lives and made the ultimate sacrifice, we were reminded of something fundamental. Courage is not loud. Patriotism is not cruel. And strength is not hateful. The marchers tried to divide, but Dearborn did what Dearborn always does. We stood tall. We are a city built by workers, by immigrants, by veterans, and by families who believe in the promise of America, a city where my daughters can sing their ABCs or Alif Ba'ta without fear, a city where a small business owner can dream bigger because their government actually delivers on their promises. So, tonight, it's not about those who marched. Tonight is about us. It's about Dearborn. The story of Dearborn is and always will be a story of progress, and as long as I'm mayor, that promise will never be broken. Thank you.
Okay, this time, do we have a motion to adjourn? Offered adjourned by Councilwoman Herrick. We are adjourned.